We now call the meeting to order. We will now pay attention to Councilwoman Turner for the invitation.
To be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Reverend Dr. Ivan Gruder, who is pastor at Westside Baptist Church. For a little background, Westside Baptist was established as, pardon my pronunciation, Forsta Svenska Baptist Kirken in 1881 here in Topeka. It began having services in English in 1917 and began construction on the current church that is at Fourth and Fillmore here in 1919. Dr. Gruder, who is fluent in English and Spanish, has been pastor since 2016. Westside Baptist is an engaged congregation with many longtime members from the area still participating. Westside hosts the Ward Mead Neighborhood Improvement Association meetings and various activities as well. They have a baby closet, they have a food distribution program, they have after-school and meal programs, and had 42 kids at their Heartland Day Camp last week. Dr. Gruder and we'll all stand.
Please join me in a spirit of prayer. Almighty and everlasting God, we praise you as the great King of the universe who governs all that is seen and unseen. Here are prayers of praise and petition for all of our leaders that you have placed over us in authority in our nation, our capital, and in our church. Guide our minds through the inspiration of your Holy Spirit to the wisdom of the ages that she will guide us to all truth. Guide our hearts into charity and compassion that all that we say and do will be for the common good as we love our neighbors and fulfill that law which you have established. Guide our hands as we yield the sword of swift justice and impartiality that all may fear you, especially those who do evil. Guide our actions this day that we may be eyewitnesses as you bring that city of which you are the light here to the earth where we will love you and where you will reign and live forever as one true God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations tonight, but we do have a few presentations. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation is, let's call Chief Cochran Ford. He would like to introduce members of his new Citizen Advisory Council. Chief?
You'd like to come on up? Not most of them here. One of the things that when I was going through the process of being the chief and then becoming the chief, one of the things I wanted to look at was establishing a Citizen Advisory Council and to be representative of citizens across the city of Topeka and represent everybody. And so I've got my 15-member council together and so... Is that all right? All right. And so what I wanted to do tonight is really just kind of introduce the members of the council to the city council and to the public. And then Thursday night at our actual meeting, the press will be invited to meet them and interview them or talk to them or whatever. So with that being said, I'm just going to go through out the order. Some of them are here and some are not. And the ones that are, if you just kind of give that parade wave, that way people will know who you are and we'll be good to go. So City Council and everybody in the city of Topeka, this is Topeka Police Department Citizen Advisory Council. We have Ed Colazo, Angela Gamber, Joyce Grigsby, Andrew Gutierrez, Iman Omar Azim is not here tonight, Pastor TD Hicks, Steve Kearney, Sheila McDonald, Stephanie Mott is not here, Keegan Schloning. All right. And that's our youth representative, if you can't tell. And we're excited about that. Chris Schultz, Stacy Torres, Lorraine Williams, Pastor Delmar White is not with us, and then Susan Zubar...
Zuber.
Zubar. Yeah. So that is your Citizen Advisory Council. Extremely excited. Now we're in place and so we're ready to start rocking and rolling. And the hopes are is that everybody in the city of Topeka can relate with at least somebody on this council. And if you want to get in touch with us, we have an email address. It's TBDCAC@Topeka.org. So we want citizens' input, questions, inquiries, issues, whatever it is, that's what they're here to help me work through. So again, this is Topeka Police Department Citizen Advisory Council. Thank you for coming today.
We move on to the second presentation. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the Affordable Housing Task Force is going to present their recommendations to the governing body. It's been a long process that was started by Mayor Wolgas to sit down and review what our needs are in relates to affordable housing. I took up the challenge of getting this group back together and making sure that we move through a process of analyzing what is needed in our community for affordable housing. So tonight, we'll move forward a presentation. A number of the members from the task force are going to present our findings, which you should have a copy of. Tony's going to start for us.
Well, good evening. I'm Tony Stottlemyer, Executive Director of your local community action agency, and it is a pleasure to be before our governing body of the city of Topeka this evening. As you've heard, this Affordable Housing Task Force was started in the summer of 2016 and involved a diverse group of individuals who all had an interest in increasing affordable housing in the city of Topeka. We began as the mayor's Affordable Housing Task Force and were facilitated by the mayor and now we get to be facilitated by our lovely city manager, Mr. Trout. Leaders from the Housing and Neighborhood Relations, Code Enforcement, and City Communications are engaged in the task force, as are landlords, housing developers, and of course, individuals who are providing supportive services to people accessing affordable housing. So it is a very diverse group of people. I've been engaged in this business for 30 years and I can tell you that this is an impressively diverse and dedicated array of individuals who are all very interested, as you are, in making Topeka a better place to live. So after two and a half years, the task force has been very hard at work and we do have recommendations that the city manager has helped us bring forward to you today and we'll present those to you with a series of individuals speaking about the different recommendations. To start us off, we will hear from Betty Allen, the President of the Shawnee County Landlords Association, and then I will ask Sasha Hahn, your Director of Housing and Neighborhood Relations, to speak on one of the recommendations. She will be followed by, I have to look at my list now, Teresa Baker of HCCI, Janice Watkins with Habitat for Humanity, and then we will close out our presentation to you this evening with City Manager Trout. So thank you for your attention to the recommendations that are coming before you and know that they come from a lot of hard work by a very diverse group of people in our community. And with that, I'll ask Betty to join us. And while she's coming up, I'll ask the other members of the Affordable Housing Task Force who are here this evening to just raise your hands, please. So we're all available for questions if you should have them. Thank you.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and a part of this group. My name is Betty Allen and I'm President of the Shawnee County Landlords Association. Our Vice President Steve Vogel and I are members of the Affordable Housing Task Force also. I would like to speak briefly about why I think it's important that we, the landlords, be a part of any discussion regarding affordable housing in Topeka and realistically what we can and can't bring to the table regarding the issues. The Shawnee County Landlords Association currently has about 110 members. We believe strongly in promoting responsible landlord practices. However, we are a resource for landlords and not a policing organization. Our membership is very diverse. About 43% of Topecans currently living in Topeka are in rental housing. With a population of about 125,000 people in Topeka, I think it would be safe to say over 50,000 people live in rented housing. If you figure an average occupancy of two to two and a half, that would be 20,000 to 25,000 rental units in Topeka. Subsidized housing provide for, Topeka Housing Authority, Cornerstone, and other government and charitable organizations shall provide a small but significant number of affordable housing units in Topeka. According to the estimates from JUMP and what we have learned at the task force, there are currently about 6,000 to 7,000 people currently in need of good affordable housing. JUMP has requested $2 million from the city to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I would like to make a few observations about this. The amount of people in need far exceeds the number that are currently receiving subsidized housing. From what we have learned on the task force, a new housing unit in this area usually costs 100,000 to 150,000 to build. Conservatively, this would build 20 new units. In a direct rental subsidy of $5,000 per year we're giving to those in need, it would be enough for about 400 people for one year. Even if matching funds were obtained, it would still meet only a small percentage of the need. I'm not saying this to be discouraging, but only to give an idea of the scope of the issue. For most people, housing is the single biggest expense that they have. No matter what is done here and other places to provide housing assistance, the vast majority of rental housing needs, has been, and is going to be provided by private landlords. For most people, housing is a single business expense. No matter what is done here and other places to provide housing, the vast majority of rental housing needs to be and has been going to be provided by private landlords. And I read that once, but my line slide slid. Affordable housing is an issue in just about every country. Topeka is no different. We at the Shawnee County Landlords Association hope that we can be a positive resource working with many of you in striving toward the solution to affordable housing in Topeka. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So just a couple of questions if you can. If there's that much demand for housing, why aren't you guys out building more? Is there particular barriers to that? Is it just there's no financing available for...
We are not like Cornerstone in that. We are individual landlords.
Right.
So we aren't building more places, but we are continuing within the city of Topeka purchasing more rental properties that are available. And so we're a little bit a different entity here, but we do have rental properties for people to rent.
So your membership doesn't build, they just buy?
We just buy rental properties. We don't build.
Okay.
No. But there are hundreds and hundreds of landlords in the city of Topeka and our goal is to try to pull them together somehow and get them involved more so they know what's going on within the community and, you know, be a part of it.
Is transitioning to building something you guys have talked about in your meetings? I mean, it seems like there's a market available for this.
No, I think we're just all individual landlords that as the business, a lot of them, that's their business, that's their job.
Sure.
And they have multiple...
And there hasn't been any discussion of expanding?
No, but you know, it doesn't mean there can't be.
Well, and that's what I'm interested in. You know...
There's options.
Housing is primarily driven by the private sector.
Yes.
And I would love to see the private sector be a part of a public-private partnership to help solve this, which you guys are the premier organization for. So I'm wondering, is there a mechanism through you all to expand some of those and add additional units to the community?
I would have to say that we would have to talk about it.
Sure.
I think if somebody came in and built buildings, you know, it'd be possible that they would purchase them.
Okay.
You know, so they came in and built a contact.
Perhaps there's a partnership there with the Topeka Home Builders Association. I don't know.
Yeah.
Just spitballing here, but absolutely, I would love to see if that's a conversation.
There's a lot of landlords that have, you know, up to 100 units and are eager to rent their buildings. They're eager to rent their rentals. It's just going through the process and you know how it's challenging, unless I'm talking too much. It's challenging to keep them up because there's so much of eternal and sometimes people do not care when they walk out the door what it's like and some of us can tell you some really horror stories.
My other question, if you could discuss with your group, is what are the barriers that the city has in order for you guys to be able to expand and to get units ready for renting? Is there something that we as the government can do to make your lives easier, within good reason, obviously? But we certainly don't want to be as much as possible getting in, we want to get out of the way of the private sector and let you guys do your thing, again, where it's responsible.
That is very much appreciated.
Yes.
Because there are things that take place and I think sometimes people aren't aware of what goes on with the landlords. That's why the group is great, because we come and cry our stories and then people have help or guidance and things like that. So it's a very good source for us to say we're not out here by ourselves and alone. And the city, I've been working with the city folks and Sasha's group and with Brent and we're starting to communicate a little bit more and open it up. And we, as the landlords, want to participate more.
That's wonderful to hear.
So we can help because...
Don't let us be the barrier.
You know, and I'm going to say this and I don't like this word, but it's the other people, the other landlords that have a problem with bringing up the houses and keeping them up. And then there's those of us that really want to make it a nice neighborhood because we can't rent them if they're not nice. And so there's so much to it. So, yeah. We're open to work together.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Councilwoman Claire?
Can you tell me, you mentioned some numbers. Where did that, what research did those numbers come out of?
Steve Vogel. I have some competition. I'm going to have to start hollowing here. A new phone.
She may be sorry to call me up.
Steve Vogel, who's the Vice President of the Association, has put together, spent a lot of time putting together numbers and we've shared some of the numbers with the Affordable Housing Group also.
So which numbers were you talking about?
I don't know. She said 7,000 need housing. There is 20,000.
That's the figure that we got from JUMP.
Where did they get that?
I don't know. You'd probably have to ask them.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to know that. And then...
But, excuse me. I will say this with a pretty high degree of confidence. I believe that there are about 2,000 people on the waiting list for Big Housing Authority, for Section 8 vouchers currently. And so that just, that would be a small part of that 6,000 to 7,000.
And then you said there's 20,000 rental houses you're thinking of?
That's about 25. It's kind of a guess when you kind of estimate it, but a type half of the people here are people that rent.
But you don't know? You're just pulling that out of the air?
Well, I can tell you how I arrived at that figure. It's probably just like grade school math. If there's 125,000 people in Topeka and 43% of people live in rental units, that's going to be approximately 50,000 people.
Okay, where'd you get the 43%?
I believe that's a...
Census.
Wrong in that?
What? Everybody's talking about...
It's from the census.
Okay. And so then you came up with 20,000 to 25,000?
Right. With an average occupancy of two to two and a half. I think it's probably closer to two. If you look at the data from Topeka Housing Authority, which had, it was a real surprise to me because I figured it would be much higher, but their, I believe their average occupancy is just slightly less than two, which is a real surprise. That just tells me that there's a lot of single people living in subsidized housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Still need it.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, in your association, in its organization, in its membership rules or guidelines, do you all have a set of standards that you encourage your membership to adhere to in their rental properties?
We have bylaws that kind of speak to some of that, but we don't have a set of standards. I think our standards are pretty high, if I was going to say where they are. We want to be landlords that are respected, that our tenants like renting from us and they want to keep it kept up and they will keep the grounds up. And if something is wrong, they don't start talking to us in a way you don't want to hear and tell us to get off the property and all of those types of things. So we try to coach each other, you know, the issues and the problems that we're having as to how we can make it a better life for the tenant and for us also. So we don't have any specific guidelines. I think we just, it's just a, to me, it's just like doing the right thing.
I understand that and I appreciate your efforts in doing that, but not everybody understands that.
I know.
Doing the right thing.
And we, and I've had many experiences with talking to landlords and talking to people and we've been getting more new members because they're realizing that this is a place they struggled with. What do I do? So many landlords are out there by themselves and they have no clue and they, they'll call me up and say, "I just bought three properties. I don't know what I'm doing and can you give me some guidance?" So we want to try to pull those people in and help train them or get them informed from our experience. If you're going to buy something, know what you're getting into because it's not, a lot of people think, "I'm going to make some money, so I'm going to buy rental properties and I'm going to rent these out." And they could, they don't have any idea of, you have to take care of your tenants. You can't just throw them in there and let them go.
Excuse me. The reason I ask the question, it's like an organization like Safe Streets.
Yes.
They have their rental program for...
Yes.
Current and new landlords.
Yes, they do that once a year. And, yeah, it's offered and we know and we go to that. A lot of our landlords go to it. And so does HCCI. They have a landlord and tenant and a lot, I know Steve just went here recently. We kind of go every year or every other year and that. But those things we want to utilize because they're already in place.
Yeah.
And so if we can help get the landlords that we need to get into the group to go to those, and then we also have Safe Streets comes and talks to us about landlord-ing. We have speakers every month. HCCI has come and talked to us. We have the police officers. We have the fire department that comes. We have all different groups that come and talk us about, talk to us about the different sections of town. You know, what's going on? Where is the crime? What do we need to do? What do we need to watch for? I mean, it's refreshing to know we have a group of people that are interested in trying to be good landlords.
That's good. And I applaud your efforts, I really do. And that's why I asked the question is that as being a member of your association, it would be a matter of some pride for me if I was a landlord to say I was associated with your group. And because of that association, I keep these standards of quality in the rental properties and I continue to inform and educate myself as to how I can better serve that clientele. So I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
We hope that happens, but you have to keep probing them, you know? It's fine. And maybe like two or three months go down the road and you don't see them, so you call them up and say, "Are you coming back? We've got another meeting."
If I could add something to what Betty said in her comments, we are in no way a policing organization. Like, for example, if you, if a person had a problem with a landlord, they would not call us to, for us to exercise any kind of discipline on them. We do promote good landlord practices very strongly, but we aren't in no way any kind of a policing organization.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We're ready to rock and roll. All right. And roll them off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, governing body members. What a great discussion and a perfect segue into my section of the presentation tonight. I've been given three minutes by the boss, so I'm going to be brief. I want to talk to you this evening briefly about, number one, authorize and invest in a comprehensive housing survey and needs assessment. So we have a very good example this evening of a bunch of fragmented information. We have a ton of information from the census, from our own consolidated action plan, from the appraiser's office, from the planning department, but we don't, a piece that we're missing, a pretty important piece to this discussion, is a housing study. Councilmember Hiller mentioned last week or perhaps the week before, a study from 1990. I inherited a lot of records when I came to work for the city of Topeka and I believe that is the most recent housing study that I have in my possession. So we're a little behind the eight ball on that particular item. Although we do produce a affordable housing plan, a five-year plan and an annual plan, we don't have a housing study. The things that I would like to bring to your attention that are very important about having a housing study is the city's own shift to data-driven decision-making. In the past two to three years, we've really taken an emphasis on management decisions and financial decisions that are driven by data and understanding the latest and most current data that we have. So we need the data to make these types of big decisions. In addition to that, we have the opportunity knocking at our doorstep to partner a housing study and the information we could gather from that with the 2020 census. And wouldn't that give us a real global snapshot of what we're talking about right now? Not only the socioeconomic elements of the discussion, but the actual conditions of housing in the community. So I think that is an excellent opportunity that we should seize upon. In addition to that, this is, these are big decisions that you have to consider and big questions that have been asked of you. And it's critical for us to understand the facts surrounding the current housing situation. I know in our own office, we have anecdotal examples of the conditions of housing in Topeka, but we don't have a global informed idea of what we really have going on. So I cannot stress how important a housing study could be for this continued discussion. I'm going to move on now to number two, A, and touch briefly on expanding opportunities for affordable housing consumers to fix and repair homes. Department of Neighborhood Relations is currently in the process with the support of the city manager of pursuing a $750,000 grant to provide funding to owner-occupied homes for more rehabilitation and repair. We're really excited about this opportunity, keep it, our fingers crossed, and that would be a major addition to our rehabilitation program. So please keep that in your thoughts, think good thoughts. In addition to that, thanks to the generosity of our amazing partners at Advisors Excel, Capital Federal Foundation, and the Federal Home Loan Bank, we have been able to secure a $19,000 sponsorship to bring a group mission trip home repair project to Topeka in 2019. What this will do is bring approximately 400 students that will perform approximately 12,000 hours of volunteer labor on, again, owner-occupied homes in need of minor repair and paint. The group estimates that they can touch between 50 and 70 homes in our community. This is going to be a big project. We're super excited and I can't say thank you loud enough to our partners. So if you see anyone associated with those agencies, please do extend your thanks because it's amazing. We're very excited. And finally, I think I'm about at three minutes. I'm going to touch briefly on expanding opportunities for residents to improve understanding of and access to housing codes and code enforcement. I don't know if you have seen, but our communications department, they're amazing. They hooked us up with Habitat and they are now producing Facebook videos where Mike, he's a star, points out a code enforcement issue and then Habitat comes in behind and addresses how to fix the issue with affordable supplies and materials and do-it-yourself stuff from the restore. So that is a pretty big education campaign that we've undertaken with the huge assistance from the communications department and it's really gaining ground in the community. In addition to that, you all know that our property maintenance inspectors do attend NIA meetings and neighborhood meetings and we try to... NIA meetings and neighborhood meetings, and we try to get face time with our residents and homeowners and renters in as many ways as we can. So with that, I would be delighted to answer any questions that you may have, but I think I only have about 30 seconds, so make it go.
Councilwoman Clear.
Okay, let's be clear with this. How are you going to reach those older people that do not have internet, do not have computers, do not watch Facebook, do not go to the NIA? I mean, there's a lot of those people that, they're the ones that need the help. Are you going to have mailing, how are you going to reach them?
For, just generally, or for the group mission program?
Yes. Or you said, you know, they've been putting that on Facebook to call attention, how can we let those people know that information?
So specifically for the elderly or disabled, that's a group in the community that we are very concerned about, because when we encounter them with code enforcement issues, they are often in a position where they're not capable physically or financially of addressing that. Right now, the inspectors are empowered to work with our partners in the community to try to help them find resources and to address those issues. But elderly and disabled will be definitely a high priority for this group mission trip. We will be financially screening folks to make sure that they income qualify, just like all of our other HUD-funded programming. This is not HUD-funded, but we will be income qualifying folks, and we will be specifically targeting elderly and disabled, because we know that home maintenance and repair can be problematic for them.
Deputy Mayor.
Just a quick one for me. Any idea how much the housing assessment would be?
A good ballpark number is about $100,000. Lawrence recently undertook one. They paid between 80 and 90, so I'm on the high side to be conservative for you, that would be worst-case scenario. But that dollar amount will buy you a comprehensive study that really gets down and digs into the subject in the community. We could pay less, I'm sure of that.
Wow. We're not going to get what we need out of it.
Yes, we want to get what we pay for.
Have you reached out to any partners, like jumped to co-fund it?
I have made some inquiries
Excellent.
in the community, and we're still working on that. I'll be back with more information on that.
$100,000 is a significant chunk of change.
I've struck out so far, but I'm working on it, guys.
I see a number of yellow shirts in the audience that would love to help us move this forward, I'm betting.
Well, if I may interject, Deputy Mayor, I also have been making contacts in our community, and we have a potential partner
Excellent.
that is interested in helping us with this.
That is wonderful news to hear.
So until we don't have the confirmation, I'm not going to disclose the name, but we do have a potential partner that is very interested in the work that we're doing.
Well, that's good, because I do think you're right, this is critical to moving this project along, so however we can get it funded, we desperately need to, I think.
Questions for Sasha? Councilwoman Hiller.
Since we're on it, I'll just, I checked with the guy who did this study in 1990 a couple of years ago to see if he was still available, and the number there was about 30,000 plus travel, and that product included the full assessment of our housing, plus recommendations for best practices and funding sources to address it, so I can throw that in the mix too, when there's time.
All right. Seeing no additional questions? Thank you, Sasha.
Hi, Ken.
Hi, Teresa.
Good evening, Mayor De La Isla and city council members. Thank you so much for having us tonight this evening. I want to talk to you a little bit about a couple of the bullet points, and first I want to say that HCCI, I'm sorry, I'm Teresa Baker with Housing and Credit Counseling. I manage the rental housing program with Housing and Credit Counseling. But HCCI is, of course, you know, we are for affordable housing, but we are mostly concerned with the existing housing, that it be maintained, and we work closely with the City of Topeka, Sasha Hahn's department, to make sure that happens. I want to compliment Sasha, she doesn't know I'm going to do that, and say that I was at Housing and Credit Counseling starting in 2007, and I've seen a lot of change in that department. And in the last couple of years since Sasha has been on board, I cannot tell you how much improvement we've seen with the housing in Topeka. It's really been wonderful. But to get on to my task, I am supposed to discuss item 2B, expanding access to rental and homeownership counseling. In addition to the free one-on-one counseling that we provide to both tenants and landlords, and also the free education that we provide, we also have more that we would like to provide. Our counseling and education is funded by the City of Topeka. I have to say, when we offer classes to landlords, we typically have a full house, and in fact, we sometimes have to squeeze people in. We also offer those trainings to the Shawnee County Landlord Association, and those members encourage their members to come to our trainings. These are good landlords who, you know, want to be well-educated in landlord-tenant law, and that's great. However, we deal with a lot of landlords that are not so reputable. I won't use the naughty words there. However, when we offer tenant training, we get little to no interest, as you might imagine. You know, it's not exactly very exciting to go to a tenant training, unless you're teaching it, it's fun. But it's not exactly, you know, interesting unless you're a nerd like myself, or Councilwoman Hiller, or Mayor De La Isla, former, you know, employees of HCCI. However, when we do offer training to captive audiences, such as the Shawnee County Corrections, the jail inmates, we have a great audience. Give lots of compliments, too, it's wonderful, if you ever need an ego boost, just throw that in there. It's great. But I have to say that, I have to admit, I understand why, you know, again, a few people would want to attend our trainings, but it's sorely needed, especially for those that counsel, people that we counsel. Because of my experience counseling and educating hundreds and hundreds of tenants and landlords over the years, I've observed to make even more of an effort to reach out for tenants and training, and this is, I've also observed this in serving with the Affordable Housing Task Force since 2016. There are various views regarding the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but if we don't address the issues that keep people in their current housing situation, or keep them from being accepted into either existing housing or new housing, then the cycle of lease termination and eviction resulting in damaged reputation, bad credit, as well as neighborhood blight and potential homelessness, and a huge weight to the services our taxpayers pay for, is going to continue. These issues make such tenants prey to less-than-honorable landlords, because naughty tenants need housing, and naughty landlords need naughty tenants. I'm certainly not grouping all tenants we counsel and educate into one basket, like deplorables in a basket, not doing that. But many of the tenants we encounter, often low to very low income, for various reasons lack life skills. Examples of this include tenants not paying their rent on time, often because they don't have, you know, money management skills; tenants not understanding what clean is, one man's clean is, another man's cluttered is, another man's filthy; tenants not understanding how to work with a landlord in a professional manner; tenants harming the landlord's property, for example, punching holes in walls, cigarette burns in carpets, allowing less-than-honorable people to stay with them, inviting drugs and other crime into the rental, and on and on. For these reasons and because we counsel so many tenants who can't find a decent place to rent because of their rental and/or credit history, I'm working on a new training initiative to help renters overcome obstacles which prevent them from obtaining decent housing. Thus far, we're calling it second chance tenancy. You may ask, since tenants don't normally come to your trainings, how are you going to get them to come? The incentive will be to gain housing. We don't have to hold a carrot stick out in front of them. Recently, I've just mentioned the potential of such classes to some tenants that I've counseled, and they've said, "Hey, put me on the list," because they have such a hard time obtaining rentals because of their credit issues, past felonies, different things of that nature. This training will cover life skills such as conflict resolution, money management, and basically how to be a good tenant in an easy-to-understand manner. There will also be a referral to our certified credit counselors. It will probably be comprised of two or more classes, a series of classes, as well as a test, a possible test, I'm thinking about that, and a certificate of completion. The idea is that tenants will be able to take that certificate to their current landlord, who is thinking of not renewing their lease agreement, and/or a potential new landlord, who doesn't want to rent to them because of the things that they've done in their past. I've already spoken to Trey George with the Housing Authority, and he's very excited about this potential opportunity, and we are going to meet to speak about it. He says it's going to help the tenants that they house keep their housing, something like this could help them. I've also spoken to a few members of the Shawnee County Landlord Association and others, and they are, you know, they're interested to know more. Will this change the world and make everybody a good tenant, and there's going to be no more evictions? No, we're not living in la-la land. We understand that there's going to be still a lot of that that goes on, but if we can just help a few people, I mean, it just makes such a huge impact, not only on those individuals, but also just the weight it puts on services. Item number 2B I also need to discuss, and that would be homebuyer education. We have an award-winning homebuyer education program. We partnered with the City of Topeka Opportunity to Own Program, as well as Habitat for Humanity, Cornerstone, local realtors, and others to provide free homebuyer counseling and education. The education is for first-time homebuyers, and really, anyone who wants that type of education, it's wonderful. If there is more affordable housing built, then we will be available to educate those homebuyers as well. We, right now, offer approximately 12 opportunities for homebuyer training, and we don't meet capacity, room capacity. We would like for this to improve, so we're trying to think of any more ways to get the word out about our homebuyer training, because it's just that good. We also find that people who go through our homebuyer training, especially with the Topeka Opportunity to Own Program, that the rate of foreclosure is almost unheard of. It's just very low. We've only actually heard of two foreclosures since 1993, that's all we've heard of. So, yeah. So, and then, let's see. I also need to talk about item 2C, and I'm almost finished. Expanding access to consumer credit counseling. As stated previously, with our second chance tenancy classes, we will encourage the audience to make appointments with our credit counselors and look at other resources, such as our HOPE program. In fact, as part of the second chance tenancy, I might mandate it as part of that. There is, our services are free, there is a $50 charge for credit counseling, however, we don't turn people away for their inability to pay. We have payment plans, very low payment plans, or it's free and we charge it to one of our grants. Let's see, we can also refer them to our HOPE program, which is funded by the City of Topeka United Way, which involves credit counseling and working with mentors one-on-one to help them, you know, step-by-step guidance. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
There's no questions, but I will say that second chance rentals program sounds amazing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor.
So I just got a text message from Mr. George from the Housing Authority, and he says their waitlist as of yesterday was approximately 1,600 for Section 8. Now, it changes on a regular basis, but that's just an example of the need in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Janice Watkins, Executive Director of Topeka Habitat for Humanity, and I was just here a couple of weeks ago, so some of this will just be old news. Before I talk about the importance of developing new housing, I want to go back to a little bit about what Sasha talked about on repairing existing housing, because a part of what I'm going to talk about is all about partnership and collaboration. And so when Councilwoman Clear asked about seniors, two years ago, Topeka Habitat for Humanity actually received funding from the Shawnee County Commissioners to start a senior housing maintenance project, and all of that information is included in every single code notification that Mike's group sends out, and we get plenty of calls on that. And it's a natural year, we helped 80 folks this year alone, we've probably tripled that. So there are opportunities for homeowners, low-income homeowners, vulnerable populations to get assistance repairing their home, but I don't want to overlook the power of volunteerism there. So we have a lot of people advocating for safe and affordable housing and new opportunities and funds for that, but don't underestimate the value of sweat equity and what a volunteer hour can do. Last year alone, with 1,200 volunteers, we were able to build five homes, repair over 80 homes, critically repaired 25 homes in the High Crest neighborhood. If we could take double that, imagine what that impact might be with our resources. I'm really here to talk about the importance of developing new affordable housing opportunities, and again, talking about the power of public-private partnerships and other collaborations. We've already seen that success this year with the City of Topeka Pioneer Group and Topeka Housing Authority and their plans with Cornerstone of Topeka and the City of Topeka on their Van Buren builds, with our organization in partnership with the donation of land from the Topeka Rescue Mission, funding from the City of Topeka that is the development of new residential housing on Powell Street in Mr. Emerson's district, and we're going to see that in the coming months with some faith-based partnerships with development in the Wardby neighborhood. We couldn't do this without identifying additional funding, and when we talk about the costs of a housing assessment and survey, I think the important part is to remember, if we have good data, that can be leveraged into additional funding. So as a grant writer, 80% of my week, if I had good data, I would be better able to secure additional funds, and so would Sasha's group, and so would Chris's group, and all of our housing partners. But we don't know what the need is. We can hypothesize, and we can try to guesstimate, but with that hard, solid data that a housing assessment and survey would provide, I'm certain we can leverage that two to three to four times over with funding from federal, state, and local sources. And finally, unsuccessfully for the past couple of years, the City of Topeka and our housing partners have been advocating to get a state legislation passed on vacant housing. This is commonly referred to as the Blight Bill. This would create ample opportunity in the City of Topeka if this was passed on a state level for housing providers to rehabilitate vacant housing and to remediate blight in our community. We know that we have a vacancy issue in Topeka, but we don't have access to those vacant homes. The cost to build a new home compared to the cost to potentially rehabilitate a vacant home is a drastic difference, and so that would definitely create ample opportunity for new and additional housing opportunities. Available for questions?
Any questions from the body? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I have a question, I just have a comment. I love you, Janice.
Okay, thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor.
I'll just throw a quick comment. I love the partnership you guys have with code enforcement, because that's one of the biggest concerns we have, is the folks that can't fix these problems, and the fact that you guys have been working together to help address that, I think is wonderful.
So what I will say is nationally, we have a partnership with Valspar Paint, which is a beautiful partnership, and we have access to paint in bulk by the truckloads, we pay the freight. Mike's group has gotten a great, done a great job of getting that word out, that we have access to free, high-quality paint for low-income owner-occupied households, and we can also provide assistance with painting of the homes with our volunteers. In the busy season of code enforcement, I believe we have given away well over 2,000 gallons of paint in the last 60 days.
You guys really are out to paint.
So the resources are there, and we more than appreciate the partnership with code enforcement.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to close this, wrap this up. The last part is the city, we're engaged in many of these activities, has been noted. There are a few things related to ordinances or regulation that we can look at. We've already looked at the Housing Trust Fund and reorganizing that, and we are in the process of taking the information that was presented last time and redrafting it in order to come back eventually for a finalized draft for approval. We're also looking at the possibility of establishing a land bank program. It's an item that's been done in the KCK, they're in the middle of doing that, and they're finding success working with private contractors to take properties that end up being done at a tax sale situation, and then turned around and sold and refurbished and put back on the market. More details are needed, but they're in the middle of their process, and it seems to be paying fruit. The other issue that we're looking at and have been studying and asking people about is looking at a neglected building registration ordinance. That would require people that have buildings that are neglected to register them, to keep them up. If they don't, then they have fines that they need to pay. So if they make the choice to leave their building and let it fall apart, that there will be some penalties that occur with that process. Hopefully, those end up getting into the hands of the right people that actually will keep the properties up, keep them on the market and available. So those are some things that at some point we'll be looking at. Obviously, there's more work to do, this is simply identifying a set of recommendations. We'll be looking at establishing small groups to continue to move these forward with the experts in the different areas in order to implement these recommendations. I want to thank those that presented tonight, thank you, and all those that have served on the committee and the task force. It's been a long process, but I think in the end it was very fruitful, great discussions about how we can do things to improve our community. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Well, I'll take the opportunity to start by saying thank you. When the process started, I know that Mayor Walgas was working on this, but I really felt that it was you, as the city manager, that had access to the staff, that were the best person to really work with the group, because When the process started, I know that Mayor Walgas was working on this, but I really felt that it was you, as the city manager, that had access to the staff that were the best person to really work with the group, because it wasn't so much the mayor coming to the body and making recommendations that would affect staff. It really took a city manager to sit down and understand what the needs were, so that we could bring that all together. As mayor, I still support the housing task force. As mayor, I would still love for the body to understand the impact that we could have if we're able to set aside funds to create a housing trust fund. As mayor, I'm advocating in the community and asking for private partners to help me create that fund. So, if you're watching out there, everybody that I've hit up, the funds are needed, and looking for ways to be creative. I just, again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I just came from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and it was really interesting to hear how the way that neighborhoods are being transformed is because people are having the thought of, how do we create funds that are self-perpetuating, because we cannot be dependent anymore on the federal government? We need to figure out a way of finding resources that are local to help create and grow our neighborhoods in a way that is sustainable. And depending on grants to come from outside, it's not going to be the solution. And the most important thing, yes, absolutely, our citizens want great roads, but our citizens need a place to sleep. And if we want our citizens not to have income volatility and to have stability, so that they could move forward, housing first. Housing first. So, I would encourage all of you just to continue listening to this great conversation, and to open not only your minds, but also your hearts, to figure out ways that we could all work together to make this happen.
Councilwoman Heller?
And smiling all the way through, I just appreciate so much what you're doing, that you've both picked up those reins and carried it forward. It's very clear that the right people are at the table. We've all seen motion in the last couple of years, something that was probably the most fun to me this evening, was to hear the opportunity to share the different pieces and the different approaches, many of which are very fresh or are emerging for us, like all the rehab that's being done through Habitat and volunteers. There are various ways, some of which are no cost and low cost, and some of which are pretty expensive, to have the Shawnee County Landlords Association. We have an apartment council, too, by the way, for those who don't know that. So, they're the more, what you call, the mom-and-pop landlords. But those are the folks that do the intervention buying and start to turn a block around. It's those landlords that come first. The homeowners come after that block is stable, and there's kids in the block again, and things like that, and we've seen that in the older neighborhoods. So, it's just so exciting to see you all coming together and to see the recommendations as you have them, and to look forward to building.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional comments from the body, I guess we move on to the roll call.
Mayor DeLayesa?
Here.
Councilmembers Heller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Edia?
Here.
Benson?
Razzant?
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
We move.
A is a board appointment, recommending the appointment of Michaela Saunders to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board, for a term ending June 20, 2020.
We have an appointment. The mayor doesn't vote in this. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Heller makes a motion for approval. Councilwoman Mays seconds. All those in favor? Please vote.
Hold on, just.
This came from Dato. This came from Dato.
Yeah. I was going to do roll call.
Okay, now you can.
Okay, now we can vote.
Oh, I already voted.
We have nine yes.
Nine voting yes. The motion passes. Ms. Saunders was going to be here today, but there was a little incident that did not allow her to be here, but we want to thank her for her dedication to our community. She's very active. She works in the marketing department of the Greater Topeka Partnership, and she is very enthusiastic about our community. Now, we proceed to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving cities' expenditures for the period of April 28 through June 1, 2018, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Heller, granting Potwin Place Neighborhood Association an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945150, at seat concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear, granting Our Lady of Guadalupe an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945150, at seat concerning noise prohibitions. D, our minutes of the regular meeting of June 12, 2018, and there is one application for a dance hall for the Midwest Lodge, and the staff is recommending approval.
What is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval, second.
Councilwoman Emerson moves approval. Councilwoman Fadilla seconds. If there's no other comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The consent agenda passes. We now move into the action items. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending Topeka Municipal Code 8.60100, adding a new section number to Topeka Municipal Code 86085, and creating a new chapter, 8.75, of the Topeka Municipal Code concerning unsafe structures.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight, we bring before you consideration for approval of the new ordinance.
Okay. We have two individuals' parts for us going into the voting. We have two individuals signed up to speak. First person signed up is Mr. Mark Gailbrich.
Mayor, I'm releasing my opportunity. Thanks very much.
All right. Second individual signed up to speak is Pat Delap.
I'm here tonight to, I don't understand all the changes, things like this. When we first passed this code, and four years ago, this book, this is 2012, was about a month away of being obsolete, because the 2015 code was coming out. We now have the 2018 code that is out. It's been available since August of 2017. If we're having problems with code, let's listen to other people throughout the country. We were told at the time, there's only over 300 cities using this book. Let's listen to them. They have meetings yearly of changes in the code, things like this. We should be looking at doing this, instead of causing a bunch of confusion in process of service, things like this. If other cities are having problems with this, let's find out what their solutions The code does need to be tweaked, too, even getting away from service. For example, we have 0% appealing paint in this city, or you become a criminal at 1%. In Johnson County, I believe it's Prairie Village, they have the same code. You know what? It takes 20% of your paint off the house to become a criminal there. Why such a vast difference? They also have issues with, and they, somebody called them out there, when we have car sales, new or used, out by Westlake malls, you know? They park all those things on the grass. That is definitely a violation of the code. Olin Park knew that, and they tweaked their codes to make those certain exceptions. Ours is, but should we ignore the code for certain people? I don't know, but we seem to be doing that. And here, the closing of vacant structures seems to be, which means boarding up the house, waiting for a better day, waiting for the money to come in to fix up. The house is going to be banned. Can't do that anymore. Well, isn't that going to be causing a track nuisance? Somebody knows the house is vacant. Make it easier to get access by breaking a window or going through that door? Leave it in there. Don't take out. Let me, allow me to board up a house, or anybody else board up a house and paint it and keep it secure that way. There's also issues on page three. It says they're going to have service of people with legal ethical interests filed on record with the Shawnee County Register of Deeds. I hate to inform them that, but just like every county in the state, an affidavit of ethical interest is filed in the county clerk's office, not with the Register of Deeds. There's been some case law that, they said also, personal service and residential service. There's some case law saying you've got to have high-level service when you're going to be tearing down a house, or selling a house, or taking a house. 30% wrong with a house. You have the right to set that level if you're going to buy the house and take the property. If you're not going to do it, it's moot. Kansas Supreme Court in Hickman Trust versus City of Clay Center says it doesn't matter how much it costs to fix up the house. It's their money. They should be allowed to spend the money the way they see fit. Governors mentioned, matter of fact, around mid-'90s, it was eligible to be torn down, because it far exceeded the 30% of what the cost of the house was, or the building. Due diligence is a word I'm scared of. I had an issue one time with the trailer. I was properly registered with the City of Topeka. The inspector did not want to go across the hallway to find out who owned the property.
So, your time is up. Would you like an extension, or?
Yeah, I meant an extension.
Do we have a motion to extend? Councilwoman Ortiz extends for two minutes, and Councilman Cohen agrees, seconds. So, we would now proceed with the voting.
Okay. I know.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, sir. You may proceed.
Thank you. Well, it's also, in addition to the methods identified in a certain section for serving people, electronic communications and telephone communications are going to be finished. That's not allowed on federal law unless you agreed to beforehand with the court client. How do you know you talked to the right person? How do you know it was the correct person? You don't know that. When we're looking at determining the replacement value, it stipulated use the Shawnee County appraiser. Don't do that. There's been an incident in last year, which the appraiser made in his mistake and claimed, and the code backed that up, saying that, well, we can build new houses for about $78 a square foot. They used that in the court, and when called on it, they said, well, I didn't say that. I just presented that information. Well, you present it, you own it. I would recommend using a state licensed appraiser. They have the license, things like this, and using, replacement value right now is about $130, $134 dollars a square foot. That's what you should be looking at, not something that low. In the last page, six, they're saying owner may appeal the cost in accordance with Topeka Municipal Code, Chapter 2.145. I got online, I can't find any such reference to 2.145. That's it. Well, my point is, we need work. Let's look at bringing in a more modern book on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Delap. Okay, we have listened to the comments of our constituents, and we have an item in front of us. Is there a motion or comment? Councilwoman Heller?
I do have some comments. I haven't counted them, so I'll split them and pass them around. I had a great deal of difficulty reading through this. The style that was set up included saying we've gotten rid of sections, and then it proceeded to pretty much repeat the section with edits. I finally figured it out, and I can be supportive if there is really a need to clarify and expedite service. I get it. And certainly, if the state and federal laws now allow us to use some methods that we couldn't use before, I'm supportive of that. But between these two proposals and trying to split out the, what do they call them? Unsafe structures, I think there are a lot of holes and gaps. So, as I read through overall, these new options for services of notice, I think it would be helpful to all of us to know for sure what those are, and that they're different now for regular notices and for unsafe structures. We need some backup. I asked for that at first, and I got a message with references on some, but otherwise, just saying we were going to have some written guidelines. Those have always been in the code before. The proposal includes dropping all the fines and fees for, and this is the next one, but they're just all interrelated, for processing and removing inoperable vehicles. Right now, we have, there's a section in the IPMC, and then there are a couple others in the code. I think we need some clarification about how they are doing that, and before we would pull out fines and fees on the IPMC changes, there's a proposal to delete all of the timeframes that are in there. When you appeal, when you, how much time you get for the various things. I'm very concerned about that, and I think we need to hear back from staff. In the unsafe structures, there's a deletion of every single section that makes reference to them out of the IPMC. When you transfer across to the proposed unsafe structures ordinance, I'm not, I need to be better convinced that they're all still there. Pat mentioned that there really are three things you deal with. It's a house that's unsafe that can be fixed, anything from there's physical problems to utilities are off, or something like that, that makes it technically uninhabitable for us. There are ones that can be fixed up or occupied soon. There are others that are going to be vacant for a while. The IPMC provides the fact that they can be set up to be secured and vacant for a year with extensions from appeals. With the transitions that are proposed, that language disappears. It just doesn't reappear in the unsafe structures. We need to reconcile it. There are various other technical details. They're itemized and bold-faced there. I think to deal with this, we need more time. Pat mentions that there are other issues if we're going to open up the IPMC to talk about. I think it would be best to put it in the Public Health and Safety Committee and address it there, get the chance to have people's questions answered, and reconcile some of the language. So, I would move that this item, and would follow with motion on the next one, that they be referred to Public Health and Safety.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager, is there any information that you would like to provide with regards to this?
Well, I think from what staff has done, I think that the information is there as to what we intended to do. I understand there are questions related to this. It's a very technical change. I know that Mary could probably answer quite a few of these now, but obviously, to do so on the fly may not be appropriate. And so, if we feel the need to go to committee at this point, in order for everyone to be comfortable, I guess that's what we'll do.
Councilwoman Clear?
Can we first hear, and maybe not this week, but can we first hear the answers and then decide if it needs to go to committee, because we may be satisfied with that.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
Yes, I'm making a friendly amendment. We first let staff answer the questions and then decide if it should go to committee.
Councilwoman Heller, would you accept that amendment?
Let me throw out to the body, I think this is going to take a substantial amount of time. So, to go through it in part, it depends on whether this body has a committee of the whole, wants to do that deep dive into those, all of those questions, and then a discussion about them. It's okay with me either way.
Well, I mean, I think that, first of all, receiving a document same day from a council person that is not the expert in the subject matter, for us to read and to approve, makes it a little bit difficult. My preference would be for staff to be able to look at this document, because I think that we may find that all the answers that we're looking for are already in the document. And if there is something else, at least staff would have the opportunity to address it to us. And at which point, if the body still feels like it needs to be sent out into committee, then the body could do it after the staff has a chance to review this.
Let me say there, and I can work on them further. I just was overwhelmed with how many questions there were and how many changes there were. This is not an exhaustive list of the questions. This is not an exhaustive list of the questions, this is the major categories. I know, for instance, that you won't find answers in the code for what timeframes they have in mind. Part of the question is to see if they do have timeframes in mind, and why there was a problem, and why we pulled the timeframes out in the first place. So you'll be able, we'll be able to get some broad-brust answers, certainly.
Councilman Lesser.
Yes, Madam Mayor. My question is more just procedural, and it's for my information as a relatively new council member. In a situation such as this where a handout comes to this, do we have the ability, for instance, if I had an issue such as this and I wanted to put together my concern, is it within the rules, or is it a violation of any ordinance or our open meetings, for me to provide that to other council members prior to the meeting?
Legal.
Councilmember Lesser, I don't think it would be a good idea to circulate that to everyone on the council. I think probably what the best course of action would be is to reach out to the particular staff member, preferably through the city manager, to discuss with him how it would be best handled.
Thank you. And that's just my question. I mean, Karen has good questions, and I share the same question, though, if there was a possibility of having this a couple days before so I could review it, you know, review it on the fly, I'm not, I'm not even going to read it right now, to be quite honest with you. But that's why I just was asking procedurally if it was available. You've answered my question.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. What I will say is that Councilwoman Heller has been reaching out to me as far as realizing, she's saying, and informed me, that she felt there were items, and that she was working through it in order to, due to time, weren't able to get to that. So apologize if we weren't able to get through that normal process, but I agree that is the best way. And that's been done in a number of issues, probably amongst almost everyone that's had something they would like to see changed. So I just wanted to second that I feel that is the best method, is that when time allows, we do that. Thank you.
So we have, yes, Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. My understanding is changing code years is a substantial burden, and actually takes years and years to implement, which is why we don't do it on a regular basis, at least in the commercial code. We saw that last time we tried to do that. Is that the same reason why we're still using the code from 2012 here?
I haven't discussed it with staff specifically, but that is, that would be my understanding and likely response that I would receive from them relative to us continuing to stay in the 2015 with the expectation that we'll move to the 2018 in a short period of time. There are changes that we can make that improve it to where we need it to be until it's time to look at the 2018 code. It's pretty rare that you implement it in the immediate after it's been approved. You're usually looking at minor changes, and so therefore, it's not necessary to make a swift jump to the 2018 code. The other thing I would say, Mayor, I wanted to bring up before, is that looking at timeframe and discussing with City Attorney Robinson, we would request that if we were going to defer to, defer to the July 17 meeting, to allow us plenty of time and to look through these in detail, given some of the other items that are on the July 3 agenda and so forth, that it would be best for us to move to that date.
So do we have an amicable change to the initial motion to bring it back to staff so the staff can have a chance to bring it back to the body on the 17th of July?
That's fine. I would encourage everybody else that has questions to submit also. Again, there, my understanding was that the staff's goal was to simplify what we had, and also to make it work faster. So some of the issues that I had, for instance, by cutting loose the time, the risk of it being inconsistent and taking longer seemed greater than the objective of going faster. I also pulled out the original IPMC. There were a number of sections that the staff customized when it was passed in 2014. And actually, to simplify, going back to the IPMC instead of compounding, the customizing looked like a more straightforward way to accomplish what was in mind. That's not in these notes. These notes were to just exemplify some of the concerns that I saw and get the ball rolling with questions. And so really looking through it yourselves as well in terms of what kinds of things have come to you, and if it were changed the way it's proposed, would you be able to follow it? Would you be able to have a constituent get through it? The other thing is that the sections that were deleted are stock ICC language. And so it troubled me to take what has been tested in whatever Pat said, 300 cities all over the country, and move away from that, and then that we needed to check with the ICC, which is on here, to see, get their advice. That's what they do, and we pay for that, so it's available to us to get that, to get that advice. And so there are also some suggestions, when you read through it, where even though we wanted to streamline, it turns out that there are duplications in the new language. So just, again, look through it, see if it really makes sense.
Councilman Lesser.
The only thing I would add, and I want to be clear at this point right now, I don't want, I'm not opening this up to ask specific questions, but I would be, I would be interested in, Mary's worked hard on this, I'd be curious to at least get her perception of where she, what her feelings are in regards to where we're at on it, and some of the comments that have just been made.
City manager.
Mary.
Well, I guess I disagree with, you have staff that you have hired to create these kind of ordinances. I practiced law for 40 years, 25 of those years have been in municipal law. I think I know what the law says, and I think I'm certainly capable of crafting an appropriate ordinance. So I do take issue with Councilwoman Heller's suggestion. I see this as just simply technical changes that are recommended to you by the legal staff. But of course, I'll defer to whatever you would like.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mary, I have a great deal of respect for you. I highly respect, and I highly respect your opinion, I always have. You even tell me what I don't want to hear. I don't think it's anything personal, I just think, and I hope you're not taking it like that, I, there's some things in here that has concerned me as well. And I know you've worked on it, and I'm sure that you've done a fine job, but I want to make sure before I hit that approve button that I totally understand what we're doing. And I would assume that's some of Councilwoman Heller's concerns as well. But it's our duty, and it's our policy, even if staff presents something, that we should look at it, make sure we understand it, and make sure that we agree with it. And there's just a couple things in here that has kind of concerned me as well. So again, I highly respect your opinion, but I do want to slow the barrel down and just look at it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear. Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, I'm wondering if those that have an issue and have questions, why don't you meet with the staff and come back? I mean, those of us that don't, why involve us in two hours of listening to your questions that you could have gotten answered in a meeting with staff? I guess that's my question.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that's part of the reason why our goal is to defer it for a couple of weeks here, as opposed to submit it to committee. Mary, I think you've done a great job on this. I'm reasonably comfortable with what I've seen. The public, I think, would like a little bit more time to take a look at this and offer their comments and thoughts. So I'm inclined to support deferring it, just to make sure that everybody has plenty of time. As I read through it, I don't have any major issues of concern that I've come across. Now, I haven't heard from everybody on their thoughts and feelings yet, but appreciate you taking the time to put that in, and I will support deferring it till the 17th, so that the public has a chance to make sure they're comfortable with the changes that we made. Thank you.
So we have a motion, and do we have a second for the deferral, for the staff to come and see it and bring it back in July? So at this point in time, is there any discussion on this? Councilwoman Clear.
When did we first start talking about this? How many, how long ago?
Last week.
No.
All of it.
Well, all of the changes were on the preliminary agenda, so three weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's been posted for...
So I mean, we do this all the time. We come in here and we go, oh, no, we need to give everybody a couple more weeks, but it's already been a month. You know, we need to get out of that habit, I think. If you're interested, read it. I mean, it's out there before it hits here. And then we give it another week, and stop spreading it out for three months.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And while I agree with that, sadly, the entire world does not read our agendas. And so we publish them, but the first time they see that is when they watch us on TV or watch the YouTube stream a couple of days later. So while I wholeheartedly agree with you, yes, this has been out for consumption from the public for quite some time, they just may not have been aware of it yet, so.
And the final comment that I will say before we proceed with the vote is this. I think that as a body, one of the things, first of all, Mary, I appreciate the work that you do, I appreciate the work that all of our staff do, and I appreciate all the work that the council does, because we also put up our time to ensure that we are doing the best that we can. But I think that we all have to also be cautious that we are not all subject matter experts, and that one thing is to question, but sometimes we may not get the answer that we want. And even though we don't get the answer that we want, it doesn't mean that it's wrong. So it's okay, we're not always going to be 100% on the same page, but I do support us going for an extra week or two, because it doesn't hurt anything. I mean, this is not one of those policies that we're going to, you know, something is dependent, you know, that is going to break if we put this on a hold. It's never bad to go ahead and wait a little bit longer. So yes, Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want clerk to restate the motion, so I understand clearly.
The motion is to defer the ordinance until July 17, to allow staff to look at the language and the amendments that municipal...
All right. Councilman Lesser.
Only other question, have, are we just voting on these one at a time, or are we voting on both of them?
One at a time. So we'll defer the second one as well. So we understand the motion that we have at hand. Seeing no further comments, we proceed with the voting for deferral.
We have ten, yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes, the item is deferred. We now proceed to item B. If the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning International Property Maintenance Code local amendments regarding notice and procedural matters, amending City of Topeka Code Section 8.60070, 080, and 110, and repealing original section.
I think that we kind of know what the song and tune is going to be here, so do we have a motion for deferral? Deputy Mayor.
Public comment.
Oh, there is public comment, pardon me. Mr. Delap.
I'll try not to repeat what I said before, and I did kind of mix the two up. I'm confused of when, in vehicles, of when saying the owner's going to be responsible. What is that? The owner of the land, or the owner of the vehicle? From what I understand, vehicles are titled separately from the land, therefore, let's say, when your children run a property from me, okay? They got written up. Do I have the right then to tow that vehicle away, to push it out into the street, to bring it down to Langley's for crushing? I don't. I would get in a lot of trouble for that, and rightfully so. So hopefully, they're meaning still the owner of the vehicle that they're going to be riding up, not the owner of the land. Because, you know, there is a way that I can get control of that vehicle, but it's a long process. It really is. Have to send certified letters out, they have to abandon it, have to advertise in the paper, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, you're talking three, four months down the line. And if they fight me, it could be more than that. Second thing I do not like there is on page, where is it? There's a section there that they are taking authority away from the administrative judge. And that's the end of page three, up to page four. And what's happening there is even though you're making diligent effort working on your property, things like this, that does not void you from prosecution. If it's not done in 60 days, you'll become a criminal, and they can prosecute you, and probably will, in municipal court. Now, Topeka, it's kind of an insulting term, but there's a term known as payday homes. What that means is, you get your check every week, every two weeks, you spend, you know, pay your mortgage, pay your car payment, things like this, and anything else left, you put into your house. You don't have that kind of money available, $10,000, $8,000 or so to put in the house. So you make progress, but the progress goes slowly. So your house becomes a payday house. You work on it with the extra money you have after the other bills are paid. I have no problem with that, as long as you're making progress. What is written in here, that takes it away from the judge. The judge cannot continue it as long as he sees progress. You aren't done in 60 days, you go to municipal court, and you're becoming a criminal. I don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Motion to defer until the 17th.
I have a motion from the Deputy Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Clear. If there's no further comments from the body or questions, we proceed with the voting.
We have ten, yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes, the item is deferred. We now proceed to the non-action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is discussion on the proposed ordinance concerning parking on unpaved surfaces.
City manager.
Mayor, I had a discussion a while back with Councilwoman Lesser regarding some issues that he had been, that had been brought to him by a citizen, and through the discussion, determined that we may have an issue relative to intent of the law versus what we actually had written in the ordinance, and decided to take a look at that in order to be able to verify that we have good, clear, written language. And so at this point, I would ask any comments that Councilman Lesser may have regarding the item. We proposed a change that will allow us to, you know, to be able to make changes that would impact the way we were doing things in this area.
Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, City Manager, Madam Mayor. The only comment I have in regards to where this came from is, since coming into office, I've had significant phone calls, which equal Mr. Trout gets significant phone calls. I think on at least four or five occasions, I've approached him in regards to this issue. We actually even had, if you remember, last week, we had a constituent who was here who talked similarly, having to deal with this over by the Gage Post Office, as well as actually, Councilmember Cohen and I were talking about an issue he has over by his house. But the reason in driving this are basically threefold for me. It is aesthetics of our community, it's the negative impact it has on economic values of property and safety. You know, the situation of allowing individuals to park in their front yards, put their RVs in their front yards, put their trailers in their front yards, has an effect on property values of neighbors who are trying to, whether it would be sell their property, list their property, it can discourage people from buying a property. Have had numerous conversations about that. Momentum 2022 talks about one of the things that we identified when we went out and asked people about how do we improve our community, and one of the items we identified was vibrant and attractive places, is one of our objectives. Then it also becomes, you know, these situations where parked in the front yard also does two other things. It creates a hazard for Topeka Police Department in the event if they're responding to a call. Councilmember Padilla, at a previous meeting, had talked about, I meant to call you to ask you what the actual phrase was, but you talked about during another conversation we had on another ordinance was about how you can protect your home to prevent it from becoming a target of crime, whether it's the bushes being trimmed back, whether it's all those different things. And... of crime, whether it's the bushes being trimmed back, whether it's all those different things. And having a situation where there's vehicles, RVs, trailers parked in yards, also creates that nuisance as well. All those situations and circumstances have had basically, it's what led me to approach City Manager Trout on behalf of my constituents, who have felt that this is important to try to create this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lesser. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was hoping that I could get a better explanation on why gravel is not going to be considered. My next door neighbor's driveway in the middle of the city of Topeka is gravel in his backyard. Yet, we have, in our neighborhood, we have alleys, and so his garage is in his backyard, hanging off the alley, with a gravel parking lot that's been there for 100 years, or a gravel driveway. So I'd just be interested to know why that's, paving is very, very expensive. And there's a number of existing spots out there that are already gravel.
Councilman Lesser, would you like to respond? Or City Manager?
Mayor, Governor Mott, when we looked at paving, we knew this would probably be the most difficult part of the language that we proposed. When we looked at it, we had a lot of concerns for an unpaved surface, a paved surface being considered rock. Oftentimes, we find that in certain locations, the grass is growing through the rocks, and it actually begins to almost look like if it is a piece of grass. Not always is that the case. There are times where people maintain it. They spray the grass, kill the weeds, whatever, in that particular area. But looking at it with a paved surface, that you would have less of that, and that was the direction that we went. Obviously, that's part of why we do discussion, is to figure out whether that's really where we want to go with this ordinance. But that was where we started as a point of writing this, and then have that discussion as to which level of requirement do we want to have.
And I'm not necessarily saying I don't support that. I was just interested to see why that was discussed. Has anyone talked about whether or not we can discuss a maintained gravel pad or something like that, that would address, because I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, I could tell you that any part of my backyard is full of gravel, and therefore would fit the gravel pad sort of thing, even though there's grass growing through it. So I understand completely the argument to one side, but I'm wondering if there's a way we could craft language that could encompass a properly maintained gravel pad. And if not, you know, again, I'm not an attorney. So.
Councilman Lesser.
I think to expand on that a little bit, too. Also, our thought was in using the word permanent, which still can have a certain amount of, you know, nothing's permanent, but a certain amount of interpretation. But I think, kind of to answer your question, what we were trying to avoid was the pickup truck down the lows to get a load of aggregate that just gets dumped in the front yard, and then over, you know, over a year then becomes embedded in the yard, and then disappears, and has the weeds, and has all those type of things, and gets maintained. I think that's what we were trying to avoid. But like City Manager said, it is for discussion, and we did anticipate that being one area of concern we would need to discuss.
Councilman Padilla, no?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I understand where you're going, Councilman Lesser, because I know from experience in walking the neighborhoods, that it seems to be a tactic, if anything, if nothing else, by some who would want to circumvent what our intent is, is to go out there and just shovel a few loads of rock underneath the trailer, or something that's been there, and is really an eyesore and detract from the neighborhood, just to try and circumvent any effort to try and maintain that property and that vehicle. So I certainly don't think that this is the end of the discussion, but I certainly think that some consideration should be given to that. And I don't know if it'd be appropriate or not, and to ask Mr. Haugen if he would have any comment with regards to that kind of an issue that code enforcement has encountered.
City Manager.
Mr. Haugen.
First, let me apologize for my bad attempt to DJ a little bit earlier. I should probably stay out of this, because it's actually a police code. And I have my opinions, but they don't matter. So, yeah, I defer to the police.
Mr. City Manager, whomever is appropriate to speak to.
With, one of the changes, Chief, you can come forward for a minute here. One of the changes that we made in this ordinance was to put this as an item related to strictly police enforcement versus being split between two organizations. We want to make sure that we have direct assignment of this type of an issue, so that we know who is responsible for enforcing it. Chief?
What was the question? To your knowledge, have you encountered this situation that I described, where maybe there was a violation of a vehicle being parked in the grass, or in the front yard or something, in order to circumvent the intent of this ordinance of having a paved, solid, maintained area, a resident would just go out and toss a few shovels of gravel underneath the vehicle, and to look as a loophole, as it were, to avoid the maintenance of a solid pavement?
Yeah, because the, there's a lot of residences that are like that, because it talks about an improved surface. And so what we're trying to do here is clarify the improved surface, and what that improved surface actually consists of, and what it is. And so, yeah, there are a lot of residents that will put down gravel, and try to declare that as an improved surface from the grass, and make it a parking area. So, yeah, we do encounter that quite often.
And Mayor, if I could, excuse me.
Yes, City Manager.
Luther Gagne could come forward. I think he has experienced the enforcement part, and advised the police department in many of these cases, and could probably provide some additional information relative to this issue. Luther?
Hi, Luther.
Hi. Councilmembers, one of the difficulties that we run into with this particular ordinance from an enforcement part of it is the depth requirement of your gravel. Because many times, what we're dealing with is a situation where somebody working for the government has to go onto somebody's private property and determine how deep the gravel is. So to break it down into simplest terms, a police officer digging a hole in the gravel and measuring it, that looks an awful lot like a search, and we don't have a search warrant to be doing that. So the depth requirement is problematic, even beyond the issues of the gravel is very superficial, and there's weeds and stuff growing up through it. So.
Actually, Councilwoman Clear was waiting, then Councilwoman Emerson.
Okay. Am I reading this right, that everybody would have to have a paved driveway? Because I'll tell you, in Oakland, in North Topeka, I've ventured to guess 70, 80% are gravel, including mine.
Sure.
And I don't want a pavement, because I don't think that we should be punished because six people decide to dump rock. I mean, there is some common sense that we should be able to use.
Right. I think the idea that we were trying to correct with the definition that we put in here is that we have a way where we can verify compliance from a, from the street or the sidewalk, where we don't have to go onto somebody's property and dig that hole, and, you know, run the, into the problems of whether we need search warrants to be doing that or not. If it's paved, and we have dimensional requirements and material requirements that we can see from the sidewalk, then it's obvious whether the vehicle's in compliance or not.
Well, I would suggest some verbiage that would grandfather in these old houses, like mine's 120 years old, that has these gravel driveways, that you know by looking, it's a driveway. So that's, that would be my request. See if we can get that verbiage in there.
Okay. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Luther, if I may, actually, exactly what Councilwoman Clear said, is my reading of A is that this basically outlaws gravel driveways even in front of the house, because it says more than six months on any other, on any part of a residential lot, for any period of time, unless it's paved. And like Councilwoman Clear, I mean, until about 15 years ago, the house I grew up in had a gravel drive. I mean, you know, that was all my parents could afford. This, I mean, this would have a devastating effect on District 4. I mean, hundreds and hundreds of houses. So I don't know if that's your intent, but that's my reading of it as well.
I think, my advice is, is avoid a situation where you have a depth requirement, and with an expectation that we're going to have a police officer or any other government employee going onto people's property and digging a hole to measure it. That's what we want to avoid.
Sure. Deputy, if I may, Mayor, but we took gravel out completely, and just had paved.
In this proposal we have, if you put it back in, I think that would still be a concern, is how deep is the gravel going to have to be, and how do we verify it?
Right. If I also could, and I, I'm sorry, I should have emailed you today, but there's also some strange things in here. There's, there's sections that are struck out, and they're simply put in a different portion. And I don't know if that was because, it looks like maybe they weren't in alphabetical order originally. Was that, okay. But the other thing is, there's a thing in here about tobacco use, and I don't understand that. Ordinance cigarette or tobacco infraction. It's Section M, line 59, and I don't.
I think that Councilman Lesser can answer that, and then I'll come to you.
65, sorry.
Yeah. My understanding of that is, is just where they started in regards with going with the code. When we do go through situations like this, they take advantage of the fact that they're working on there to clean up the code of languages that, language that, is that correct, Mrs. Robertson, I believe? They're cleaning up languages on portions of it that really have no application to what we're looking at changing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, cigarette or tobacco infraction on these?
These three are actually removed, and so instead of just renumbering, they struck them and put them back in. You'll find them.
Okay. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ortiz.
What they're trying to say, Mr. Henderson, is don't smoke on the gravel. And don't chew tobacco. I'm going to share, I won't support it, and I'll tell you why. I called a construction company to come and look at my driveway, whom I'm still waiting on an estimate.
I'm sure they'll give you a fantastic deal.
And still waiting. And it's, I think it's so high, they don't want to give me the estimate, but it, but it's, concrete is high. But what I've seen is, you know what? It's that, it's that little gray area. Everybody's trying to get through that little gray area. And I've seen a lot, Mr. Lesser, since I've been on here. I have seen cars on wooden blocks, because it's a paved surface. I've seen cars halfway in the alley on the paved surface, or gravel, and then halfway paved. I've seen it all. We have got to get the right verbiage in here to cover everybody. How do we do that? I don't know. I don't know. I've seen them on bricks. I've seen, I've seen, I've seen it all. I've even seen the guy that would come out and move his car so many feet, and the police would go out and mark where he went, and then a couple day, you know, because they could, what is it, two days, chief? And he's got to move it, and then he, guess what? Him and his buddies are out there pushing it back behind that line, but he never got ticketed because he was in that gray area. But when we talked about, and we've talked about this before, this has been an issue before, and that was the number one thing, is people cannot afford it. Business owners get upset when we passed it, the last time we passed it, and it'd be a good thing to ask for those notes, that now they have to pave their surfaces where all their employees used to park on the gravel. It's a lot. It's a hardship. So I won't do that. We've got to figure out a different way to do this. But they're going to continuously do what they do, and that's just to beat us at our own game.
Okay. So I have Deputy Mayor, Councilman Mace, and Councilman Lesser.
Luther, so, not to put you on the spot, but how, if you were in our shoes, trying to craft language that was flexible enough to allow people to have well-maintained gravel pads that were free of grass and vegetation, where there wasn't a depth requirement, how would you do that if you were in our shoes? You generally are excellent at crafting legal poetry, and we're putting you on the spot, I know it. If we could just get some drums in the background.
If you're going to allow gravel, require it to be free of vegetation, and the dimensions of the gravel need to be sufficient for the entire vehicle, and not just the wheels.
Okay. Would you foresee some sort of, not necessarily embankment, but some sort of edge around the gravel to try and keep it contained?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, if you said gravel, just the dimensions and weed-free. That way you can see the gravel.
In your opinion, is there a specific minimum size, so that somebody's not using sand, per se? I mean, technically, dirt is gravel at some level, I suppose. It's just microscopic. And again, I'm trying not to get too arbitrary, but at some level, we have to have flexibility, though it can't be so flexible that somebody can say, oh, well, that dirt's technically gravel.
City Manager.
I want to interrupt here and look, with regards to crafting that language, you know, we're listening, taking notes. We're talking amongst ourselves here, trying to take this in and look at the information as to how we would craft it. And some of the things that he mentioned, I think, are potentials. So, I mean, we'll continue. I know there's a few more that want to talk, but just so you know, we are looking at this and trying to figure out with this language, with the intent, some of the issues that would occur, where we would go. So we're tracking.
Wonderful. The only other comment I would make is the 48-hour notification before something gets towed. Given certain times of the year when people run vacation, you can be gone for more than 48 hours and have a completely innocent issue, and you come back and something's been towed away. And you weren't given, first of all, you weren't really notified. They put a sticker on the thing. So you weren't really given ample opportunity to move something like that. And is this the proper place to fix that in relation to the rest of this?
Deputy Mayor, I don't believe, I don't recall that that's in this section. We'll check to see which section that would be involved in. And it makes a difference relative, I think, as far as whether it's on the road or off the road, in regards to how it's counted as far as timeframes.
Well, I bring that up, because, you know, if somebody's been parking something on the road, and then we're going to require them to build something and move it to that, I think we should give somebody a reasonable amount of time to go get a dump truck load of gravel, and put it down, properly contain it, and spray for weeds. So, I mean, because Henderson Construction is clearly behind.
Behind.
But my point is, we want to give people the opportunity to correct issues, and we want to give them enough time to do that. But we don't want to say, oh, if you do that sometime in the next 10 years, you'll be fine. So where does that, that ability to correct within a certain amount of time, where does that fit into, hey, we're going to try and standardize this, this is where we need to have you move things, and how we want you to do it?
Thank you. Councilman Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. In thinking about what you guys were saying about driveways, I started reading through there, and I don't see that there's a definition of a driveway at all. And perhaps if we do a separate definition for driveway, perhaps with a curb cut, that maybe we could make some allowances there. Just a thought.
Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to clarify, Sylvia, the intent also was, we never had the intent of really driveway, per se. That was part of, in regards to the gravel portion of it. And our intent was to try to eliminate the front yard becoming a storage facility for abandoned vehicles, RVs, trailers, those type of things. It really was never aimed toward the driveway that the individual uses and utilizes every day, you know, to park his operating vehicle to get to and from work. So, you know, the great thing is, obviously, it's discussion, and a lot of good stuff has come out. We can go back and look at it and see how we can tweak it. And because that was, you know, I had a conversation again, because, you know, I had not thought about that in reading it. And actually, Karen and I spoke this morning, and it was, well, the driveway portion of it, and gravel. So I think we can work on that. There, again, the intent of it really is, and what I hear is, is people just don't want the front yards becoming, you know, junk, you know, junk site.
We have two. We have two individuals signed up to speak.
I would like to.
Yeah, Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a, I don't know if I'd make this a question or a statement, but I think there's a chance that we really have two separate but related things going on here. Because this ordinance, or this part of the code that we're talking about, is just saying, no, you're not supposed to park your car in the yard. You're not supposed to park it on the grass and the dirt. You'll get, you can get in trouble if you do that. It needs to be on an improved surface. And so, is there a chance that if we want to talk more about where you can put an improved surface, or what it should be made out of, that we should have Mr. Fiender up here, you know, that we should be talking about development services? We talked about driveways, if you remember, only a month or so ago, when we talked about building code changes and whether they needed to be permitted or not, and ultimately, we left them in as requiring a permit. Because it's, what I'm hearing is some of the concern, and we've all seen it in our neighborhoods here and there, is not putting that, whatever it is, paved surface or gravel or whatever it is, right in front of the dining room window in the front yard. Well, that's a different issue than whether you're parking on the grass. And so I wonder, as we continue to work on this, whether they need to be separated. I was around when the language was added to allow the property maintenance inspector to do a uniform citation, and that was to save money and be efficient for the homeowners as well as for the city. The idea was, if they were already out on the property, looking at the exterior or doing a complete inspection, if they saw that somebody had parked a vehicle on the yard, they could write it up while they were there, rather than have to have a police officer as well come out and do a separate write-up and a separate certified letter or whatever had happened to get that ticket issued. And so, we might want to put that back on the table to consider. I think that's why it was in there. Understand, we get back into service, which we were talking about in the other ordinance as well, staff was going through for cleanup, but I found it interesting that this one said, the notice on page four talks about who can serve the notice, and there might be an issue there in terms of who has ordered that notice to be served. We can have, you know, under code anyway, you can have all sorts of people deliver the notice, you don't have to, the judge doesn't deliver it themselves, or the supervisor necessarily. So there might be a peek at the language on page four about serving. In terms of just the rock, I've been involved in putting those in, as well as certainly we have rock parking pads and driveways all throughout District One as well. We also have rock alleys all over town. If they're fine to drive on, why aren't they okay to park on? I really think we need to look at just that issue. Really, the issue of how many inches exactly, I'm not aware has ever been an issue. The reason that the four to six inches is in there, as I understand it, and from my experience, is you need to dump four to six inches of rock, drive over it for a while, it's going to sink periodically, you need to refresh that with some more. Most people are thoughtful about where it is. There are as many people, I've driven by properties out in Jeff's district, or Councilman Mays, and so on, Jensen, where people who have an RV have put rock on the side of their house or on the side of their garage, so that they can legally have their RV off the street but on an improved surface. I mean, there are, there are people that have a third truck, or they've got a boat or something, because all those are covered by this, but people all over our city have done that, and they've done it neatly and nicely, and it's not a problem with anybody. So, one of the questions I asked City Manager right away was, oh, it's always good to talk about an idea, but did anybody inventory just how many of these rock drives and pads we have all over town? That's a huge issue for us to even think about changing this. Now, if we want to go forward and talk about where somebody can put a driveway in, or a pad, I think that would be done elsewhere, but perhaps is a different, could be handled as a different issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heller. We have two individuals signed up to speak. The first one is Darren Reed.
My name is Darren Reed, and I'd like to speak briefly about the proposed change in the ordinance regarding parking on unpaved surfaces. I believe the change is needed for several reasons. First is due to the fact that it is becoming more and more prevalent, that people are parking more vehicles in front yards and on the lawns. This includes cars, trucks, trailers, and camping trailers. Some people skirt the existing ordinance by placing the tires on patio blocks or boards. This is very detrimental to the neighborhood appearance. Allowing this is part of the cause of areas becoming blotted and rundown, which creates mud bogs from the rain and mud ruts from the vehicles moving in and out of the yards. I've observed over the years that if a vehicle is parked on gravel base, that it will eventually sink into the ground, and is no better than parking on a lawn. It is therefore that I support the approved pavement of concrete, brick, or asphalt. Second, it decreases property values due to the non-operating and rundown condition of the majority of items being parked in yards. I think the ordinance change should be changed, requiring all vehicles to be parked on approved paving surfaces for the entire area of the parked vehicle. This will go a long way to maintaining and improving the appearance of our city. Thank you.
For your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Kayla Bitler.
Good evening. My name is Kayla Bitler, and I work for the Greater Topeka Partnership as the Senior Vice President of Momentum 2022. I want to speak just very briefly tonight about aesthetics. The image of a community is fundamentally important to its economic well-being. Every day, people are making decisions about where to live, where to invest, where to vacation, and where to retire. Those decisions are based in large part on the appearance of a community. Successful communities pay attention to aesthetics. As most of you know, a pretty significant amount of community input went into Momentum 2022. As a part of that, a survey went out in August of 2016. We had approximately 2,300 responses. One of those questions pertained to rating the aesthetics and appearance of our community. 14.7% of respondents rated the aesthetics and appearance of our community as above average or excellent. Only 15%, that's a problem. Richard Florida, who is one of the world's leading public intellectuals on economic competitiveness, notes that perceived beauty or aesthetic character of a location has a positive and significant effect on perceived community satisfaction. In fact, it is one of the most significant factors alongside economic security, good schools, and capacity for social interaction. Aesthetics are a direct component of community pride, and quite frankly, that is one of our community's largest challenges. For this reason, Momentum 2022 focuses heavily on creating vibrant and attractive places. Topeka and Shawnee County can really take steps to improve both our internal and external image by working to ensure that our community is aesthetically pleasing. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? We have had ample discussion, and I think that the staff has a lot of feedback to move forward. Deputy Mayor.
I would just like to say thank you for bringing up this conversation. I mean, I do agree that there is room for compromise here, whether it's sorting out appropriate driveway placement, if it's sorting out rules for maintaining approved, you know, gravel pads, that sort of thing. It is a problem, absolutely, and I think that this will be one of those interesting things we get to work through and try to sort out. It's one of the, you know, one of the unique things about our community is that we have such vast, diverse areas, where in some parts of town, there's a lot more gravel than in other parts of town. So this will be an interesting thing to try and work through, and I hope we can, I mean, it is, it is an issue that we need to try and clean up. So, I appreciate everyone bringing in the great discussion, and I hope to see a resolution soon.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Heller.
I actually had a question. I thought that this all got generated by the situation that came to our attention a couple of weeks ago, where somebody had tried to skirt this by putting a vehicle, I forget what kind of vehicle it was, up on blocks. And my question was, if I could ask here now, at the tail end of the conversation, was if somebody just had grass, but put something up on blocks, that would have been considered a violation of this ordinance, would it not?
Councilwoman Heller, through the interpretation that our legal staff has made, that would not be a violation. By putting it up on blocks under each tire and underneath the tongue, they did not, they were not in violation, and that's the issue that we have. Looking at it from the literal standpoint, it was vague enough, and we did not feel that it was set up correctly to be able to push that forward as a violation. And so we wanted to look at improving the ordinance in order to address that, to make sure that it is not vague for anyone that is trying to enforce it, so that if our officer is out in the field looking at writing something up, they're clear and understanding what the ordinance has in place.
I guess, because what it says is, the area used for parking is improved, and so it would seem to me that we were already covered.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. We now proceed with non-action item B, if the clerk would read.
B is discussion on the 2019 City of Topeka operating budget.
City Manager.
Mayor, at this time, I'll ask Nick Hawkins, our Budget Director, to please come forward, and he'll go through. Tonight, our intent is to try and get through the other additional departments that we did not cover on Saturday, and get up to the other funds portion of the budget, which we will take up tomorrow night.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As City Manager mentioned, we have four departments that we did not get to on Saturday, and so with your permission, I will start with the Police Department, which, if you have your books with you, starts on page 98. And I'm going to follow a similar format that we did on Saturday, where I'll talk about the funding source, any changes in position, and then some high-level changes to the budget for that department. So Police is actually the largest general fund-supported department in the city. There was a net change of two positions within the department. We talked a little bit about that with Municipal Court and the changing of court security. Also, moving over emergency management from Police to City Manager's office. So those changes combined to make the additional two positions that the Police have in their This, Police reflects the reorg that Chief Cochran came and talked about a couple months ago with the governing body, and so that's kind of the result of most of the changes and most of the changes in positions that you'll see within the divisions. I am going to jump to the Executive Bureau on page 101. Primary change here is, in addition to the emergency management move, this includes social service contracted grants that were moved out of the ECD committee process and moved out into departments. So three of those grants were actually police-related, police-related services, so that moved into the Police Department budget. On the Criminal Investigation side, that is on page 103, contractual services increased $62,000. That reflects the reorganization. It does discontinue funding for a KBI DNA specialist, which reduces options for prioritizing and expediting DNA testing. Commodities increased $30,000 due to a reallocation of fuel expenses between bureaus. Field operations on page 105, contractual services increased $88,000. That's primarily due to increase in fleet maintenance fees. And then commodities increased $85,000 in fuel allocation, that's based on prior-year actuals and projected spending in fuel for 2019. And then finally, on the Community Outreach Bureau, this includes a potential addition of a school resource officer that would be funded by the school, and then also reflects the movement from the reorg, includes the crime analysis and volunteer units that were moved to this bureau, and the removal of the bike unit. And then other increases are information technology fees. So those are the primary changes in the Police budget, and I would open it up for any questions.
Councilwoman Cleare.
Actually, this is probably for Chief Cochran. You know, I'm your biggest advocate, but I'm also probably the biggest person to hold you accountable. First, I'd like to know how many officers were short. Can he come up, please?
Chief, can you come to the mic, please?
And then I don't want any hate email, because I'm going to bring up school resource officers. I'm not saying, take them out, I don't want them. I'm an educator, for gosh sakes. They are very important, but I do have some questions. So where are we as far as personnel and officers?
Were 20 officers, 20 positions short, is that right, Gretchen? You have the exact number, because we just had a resignation a long ago. We're actually, we're 20 officers down at this point.
Okay, then answer me, why we have them in, why our officers are in the schools when TPS has their own officers that are in the school? Why are there two different entities there?
Well, the School Resource Program is a program that's been a standing unit for several years now, and is partially funded by USD 501. USD 501 does have their own police department, but they are what's called a secondary law enforcement agency. They subsidize or support the city of Topeka Police Department. And so, the, being a supplementary unit, or police department, then Topeka Police Department picks up a lot of the other roles. And so, the School Resource Program is one of those that's been in existence for many years, and it's been that way, and it's partially funded, like I said, through USD 501, and it's, it's been looked at, it's been up in the number of officers, it's been downsized in the number of officers, but like I said, it's one of those programs, that's an existing program.
My understanding is, the city pays about $200,000 to have those officers in the schools.
Correct.
And I remember when, I think it was Chief Brown, tried to remove some, and everyone went ballistic, because we wanted these officers in the school. And I understand we want to be in these children's lives before they hit the streets, but it's still, I don't understand why we just don't let Topeka Public Schools have their own officers, why we're even involved. If we took our eight officers that were school resource officers, and I know they love that job, that would only put us down, what, 11 positions?
No, we'd still be short 20 positions.
Why?
Because we're authorized the number of positions that we have. So we would still be down, it'd just be reallocating resources if we moved officers out of the schools.
Okay, I think I get that. But that would, I'm concerned at this point in time, when we're talking about the streets, we're talking about everything everybody wants, why we're using that $200,000 when Topeka Schools can do it themselves?
Well, it's, Topeka Police Department's been involved in schools, involved in the schools, inside the schools for well over 20 years. And so it's been a service that we have continued to provide and worked with USD 501, and it's one of those evolutionary-type processes. We've been through the DARE program, we've been through the GREAT program, as things transition. With the current environment, school resource officers are... With the current environment, school resource officers are, I think, a needed asset in the aspect of, not only for safety of the students, but also for the safety of staff, and school resource officers perform a very important role.
And that's not, I understand that. But most of Topeka Public Schools' officers are retired TPD officers, aren't they?
A lot of them are retired.
Right. So they still have really good officers there.
Correct.
Does anybody else have, I mean, I just don't understand that 200,000 and what the difference is on having them have their own police officers as, as that's been evolved. I'd rather see those officers on the street.
And for my part, I can tell you that those research officers that are part of the TPD are, number one, a significant partner that allows our officers, not Topeka 501 officers, that are no longer involved with Topeka Police Department, to have intelligence that we wouldn't otherwise have. Most importantly, they're having one-on-one interactions with police officers and building relationships that they otherwise wouldn't have had. I could tell you that Officer Kyle, who is in Jardine, is my, one of my daughter's favorite people in the world. The relationship that he's developed with these kids are so awesome that they actually call him Betty Copper because he likes to cook and he shares recipes with the kids. And it's with all the kids. It's not just the good kids, it's the kids that may end up needing intervention with the Police Department, and that intervention would be a negative one instead of the positive relationship that they're beginning to have right now. So I think that these positions are crucial, especially when the, the activity that we've been seeing lately has been of young people.
Yeah, but there's still officers there. I'm just saying, why is it our officers?
USD 501 pays us $200,000.
And we pay them $200,000?
No, no, they pay us $200,000.
Okay.
We don't pay them anything. And so for the officers to be in the school, like I said, it's contracted, it's been in existence for many years with USD 501. They pay us $200,000 to have those officers in the school.
Does that cover all the, everything for those, is that enough to cover the salaries or retirement, all that for those officers?
It does not cover 100% the cost to have the officers there. And again, when we talk about units within the Police Department, the staffing is set up to where if we were at full staff, there would not be a staffing issue anywhere within the department. And so those units that we have established would be manned 100%. And, you know, it's just like motorcycle unit, and several other units are running short of what their unit capacity should be. So when we get caught up hiring, recruiting, and all that, then the, when we get to that point, we won't have those vacancies in those units, and staffing on the streets will be adequate. And so when we talk about, like I said, the units within the Police Department, that unit's allocated X number of officers. And so it does, technically, it does not impact, you know, staffing on the streets.
Well, except you took away the bicycles. If you take away the SRO unit, where would those officers go?
They would be absorbed into field operations, and when the bicycle unit was dissolved for a couple of reasons. But we're also going to be picking up some other assignments as the year goes through. And so looking at staffing and where we get the most sufficient services from those officers and those assignments, we have to look at that and see if that unit's still viable or not.
So is Nikki or somebody here that can give me that, that number, what isn't really, what we're paying? If they're paying us $200,000, what are we paying out for those seven officers? Is that right?
It'd be, $200,000 is approximately half of what the salaries would cost.
Okay, so it is costing us about $200,000.
City Manager.
I think, Councilwoman Clear, the thing that I would say is that the reason that we have the situation that we do, as far as our involvement in the Police Department, being involved in the schools, is that there was a decision that that was a priority at some point, and we established them in there. So I think the biggest decision we have to make is that's still a priority, is the governing body still want to support that project. And so, you know, we brought it forward under the understanding that we would support that project, and those officers are included in there. We also, though, as we looked at the possibility of adding a school resource officer, we knew, given our budget, that that individual would be paying for full. And so the priority has been existent, the budgeting has been provided for it, and so that's why it's happened.
And then my next question would be, maybe we get TPS to pay the full amount. If we want to keep them in there, why are we spending that $200,000? Let TPS, if they want us there, to pay that full amount? Thank you.
Yeah, and that's something we can look at next time. The, the contract and all that's been signed for the next school year, and so next budget cycle, that is something that we could definitely entertain.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I think the number one thing, Sandra, because I had that same question, was there, our officers can arrest and do things that are, as our, our school resources officers can't, and time is crucial, very crucial. You know, Chief, and, and I'm going to make an appointment to sit down with you because I don't like the shortage, and then also I've heard that we've got a lot more people that's going to retire. So I got a count of 35 heads down, and, and I just want to understand that. Are we not recruiting? Are we not opening up our recruiting class? Are we not getting any recruits? I mean, I, I just want to know where the breakdown is. I've also heard that our NIA officers are back on the street. You've got them, and, and I, I want to understand that. So if they're only able to do NIA work two days, and they're back on the street, and they're off two days, and, then that's going to put us behind. And I always felt like our NIA officers were there to kind of ward off before, you know, keep, keep that relationship and ward off a lot of crime before it ever got started. So I would just like to understand, stand that, because, because I really don't, and, and it's kind of, kind of scaring me, and it's kind of scaring some of our constituents. And, you know, I've had the last two NIA meetings, and I, I think Mr. Henderson was at the one that they were very concerned with the, with a lot of the crime that was, that was over there in Central Highland Park area. So I just need to understand. And then, and then my next question is, did the contract, I know we don't, we're not going to have the guards downstairs, they're going to be our officers, is that correct? And I, I like that, but is the contract, because I know when we tried to do that before, is the contract up for those guards? Because they, at one time, they were telling us we could not do that because it was in their contract that they monitored the door and stuff.
Well, they are members of the FOP contract. That contract expires December 31st.
Okay.
And so the city has made the decision they're going to step away from those positions, so eliminating the court service positions, which there's four of them. And so court security is going to be transferred over to the Topeka Police Department. And so we'll be absorbing some of those full-time positions, the positions, not necessarily the people, but the positions into the Police Department. And so starting January 1, the Topeka Police Department will be responsible for court security as well as security for city council meetings and stuff like that. And so that was part of taking into account for seeing that with the restructuring of the Topeka Police Department, was to account for some of those additional assignments that we would be taking on. And so that's why part of that restructuring was done with an anticipation of that coming.
Okay? So they're going to be here all day, Monday through Friday, and then at our council meetings, is that correct?
Well...
And then how many? Because we got two downstairs now, and then we've got one up here, so is that always going to be three?
Well, the court service officers, they have a rotation and all that, and so we're looking at their scheduling. But when you see the officer downstairs, that's extra duty assignment, that's not, that's paid out of a different fund, and that's not taking somebody off the streets. That's an extra duty assignment.
And that was going to be my next question.
So overtime, you mean?
Yes.
Because we're, because we're short, we don't have enough to do that, huh?
Well...
Because we're short, we don't have the manpower to do it, but we're going to do it. Is that what you're saying?
Right now, that's provided by court services, okay? The four positions. And so we supplement court services because they don't have, they have four people. And so when we have an officer down there right now, that officer's on overtime in a special assignment, and that's paid out of a different fund to help cover the number of individuals that they have with court services.
But, but Chief, if, if we're not going to start it until January 1, why are we paying somebody overtime now? Why, why is he down there now?
That, that has been, that position has been there for as many years as we've been doing security here at the, the city council meetings.
So we've always paid them overtime?
Yes, that one position.
Okay.
As far as recruiting, we have a very vibrant recruiting and rehiring program that's in place. We run two academies a year, and so we're working very vibrantly on trying to fill the vacant positions. But over the last five years, we've averaged 24 officers leaving the department for retirements, resignations, terminations, but we've been averaging 24 over the last five years. And so that's hard to, you have to hire 30 a year, maybe, to get in front of that, and working on a proposal for the City Manager, because he asked at what point with the number of hires would it take to get to full staff, and so working on that proposal for him right now. If we could hire 30 officers a year, it would take us 2025 to get to where we'd be at 100% strength. The thing you got to keep in mind is the Topeka Police Department right now have 65 eligible people that are eligible for retirement that can go at any time. And so that's just an aging staff, as you would say. And so you have to, you know, take that into consideration, they can go at any given time. And so when we do planning and stuff like that, it's difficult in the aspect of, you don't know when they're going to retire. They can go at any given time, and then they can do that. We currently have 14 in the academy right now, we got six in the field training phase, and so when we talk about being 20 positions short, we got six in the field training phase that, when they're done in the field training phase, we're still short, but that's six more bodies that will be on the streets. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And we got 14 in the academy right now, we have 20 in the process, and we're continuing, we have several more testings for the November class. And so very confident, our numbers are going up in the number of individuals that we are starting to recruit. Law enforcement is a very difficult career right now to recruit people into. It's very, very difficult, and there's a variety of reasons why, and I think we're all aware of those. And so we have to be able to go out and find those individuals. That's why we take our testing on the road. I was just told the other day that we were going to be taking our testing out to several cities out in West Hays and places like that, coming up very soon for efforts for the November class. So we have a lot of very aggressive recruiting things that are in place. We actually have an officer that's going to be going to the International Chiefs of Police Conference in Oakland, and, in Califor, Orlando, Florida in October. He's a keynote speaker to speak about our recruiting efforts because it's nationally recognized now across the board. We're very forward-thinking, very aggressive-thinking, very excited about what we got going on. The problem is, is we got to play catch-up. And like I said, losing 24 officers a year for the last five years, that's a lot of individuals. And so those are things that we're working on. I'm very confident that within the next couple of years, we're going to be in very good shape. I feel very confident, actually, at the end of the year, we're going to be in a lot better shape than where we are right now. Like I said, with 14 in the academy and we get 20 at least, hopefully, we'll have up to 25 in the November class, so we'll be in a lot better shape as far as that goes. When we talk about supplementing manpower on the streets, you are correct. One of the things that we are looking at, because one of the things we have to get through right now is our training cycle ends June 30th with Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center. So we have to make sure that we get our officers are mandatory 40 hours of in-service. And so to meet those needs, we're having to pull individuals off the street to get to that training. So what we are doing right now is we are supplementing field operations, which is patrol, with officers from the Community Outreach Bureau, which is community officers and community response officers. They are picking up a couple days of their five-way workday. A couple of those days is being spent in patrol to answer calls, to take up that, that slack until we get through this training cycle. But those are things that we're doing. The SROs, when they're not, during the summer, when they're not in school and not doing the one-week, two, we have two one-week camps, they are put back into call-taking capacity to help address, you know, their heavier workload in the summer. So I understand your concerns on the NIAs, but I guarantee you that we're meeting those needs. They're not going unmet, and we are addressing the crime issues across the city, and we have a lot of, you know, very good programs that are, that are in place.
It was, I always get it wrong, is it Sergeant Gogan or what is he? I went, I went to the training where, or where they had showed that we're having a hard time, we can get them to apply, but we can't get them to the test, and I know he was helping them. Who's helping them now? Is he still a part of that?
Officer Gogan does help with hiring and recruiting, but we have a hiring and recruiting officer, that Sergeant Adams, Adam Arздор, and the whole training staff actually helps with recruiting and hiring. Yeah, it's not uncommon that we have 50 people sign up to take the test and 20 show up to take the test. And of the 20, it's not, it's not abnormal to have only 10 pass.
Yeah, and so I do understand it, and I do understand the struggle that we have to get them there, but I, I just, I don't know why we didn't see so many people retiring. And now listening to you, maybe it's because, like you said, they can go at any time, but I would hope we would, we would keep a, a good eye on that as, as well, because we can't afford to be any, any shorter.
Oh, yeah. I guarantee you, we are definitely looking at that, and we are really working diligently on that. But, and, and we, we are not a rarity across the state of Kansas. We actually in a lot better shape. Like I said, our hiring and recruiting plans that we have in place and the things that we are doing, like I said, are nationally recognized, and, and I think that speaks volumes actually in the aspect of where we're at on the number of individuals. Like I said, we have six in the recruit, six in the FTO phase right now. That means we only have six people in that recruit class.
Right.
I got 14 in the first one that I've been here on, and we're going to have upwards of 25 in the next one. So I think our recruiting efforts that we're doing, the things we're putting in place, you know, Lieutenant Tremble has a training section, and his guys are working very diligently on this recruiting and hiring effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So at this point in time, it's 8:30. We are still in the process of the budget, but I am getting looks from the gallery that we need a break. And we typically take a break around 8:00 or 8:30. So why don't we recess for five minutes that always end up being 10, and we will come back to this discussion, still continuing with the Police Department, because I have two individuals that also want to ask questions.